Call this public caucus to order. The purpose of our caucus today is to meet with representatives from Pell and D C E D to discuss Scranton's current status and our track on our exit plan. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Jerry Cross, our representative from Pell, and then after that, we'll entertain questions from council. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Rogan. Today with me is Matt Dominus. I think most of the council will know Matt from our meetings and Jim Rose from D C E D. I do have a handout, I think I already prepared it for you and gave it to you folks if you want to follow through real quick. But obviously, the exit plan was adopted a year ago. It had specific aims towards getting the city on a path to rescind its distressed status, hopefully, the next year or so. But since the adoption of the exit plan, the city has had a positive cash flow. As you know, we monitor cash flow for the city monthly. We review cash position every week at our meetings, and I'm happy to say that the city has had a positive cash flow through the remainder of 2018. And they ended 2017 with a positive cash flow and a small fund balance. The city is current on all accounts payable. That's been the situation right along since, gosh, since the exit plan was passed and even before. Obviously, cash gets a little tight at the end of the year when we have our big MMO payment due, but the city has been current, and I'm happy to say all accounts payable are up to date. The city has also, as part of the exit plan initiatives, completed its debt reduction and its debt refinancing strategy. You recall that one of the initiatives in the exit plan was a debt refinancing strategy that occurred, I think, last September after the passing of the exit plan in June. So the sewer sale proceeds were used for debt reduction and as part of a debt refinancing strategy. The city also, as part of the recovery plan initiatives, examined the effect of lowering the discount rate on the pension. That's the amount of money the city's pension actuaries assume that your money on deposit will earn, and when you don't earn that, your MMO is affected and your liabilities are increased. In accordance with that, the city did follow the lead of the exit plan and the recommendations of its actuary, and the pension discount rate was lowered from eight to seven and a half In addition, as part of the overall reduction in liability to the city, there was a contractor, as you're well aware, hired for a part of an RFP on independent disability pension medical examination. That's the requirement that every year, as part of the disability pension reform, every year, there would be examinations of suitability of pension recipients that are on disability. Currently, the city, as you're well aware, is in process of investing 22.9 million, the remaining balance of sewer proceeds outside of the escrow funds that will come back to the city. That is about 22.9 million, and there is, that's currently in process. As part of the exit plan initiatives, the last pension-related one, the city will consider, and I think in the future, you'll be evaluating its impact on the MMO, especially with the investment returns you're receiving and the lowering of the prior discount rate, maybe a further reduction to 7%. And 7% would get the city in a position that's comparable to a lot of other cities. A lot of people are going down to seven. Seven and a half seems to be the average, but seven is close. Some very healthy plans are in the sixes, but I don't see liabilities being ameliorated that much that you can get down that low. Obviously, it's a goal for the city to work for in the future, but with any luck, you'll be out of Act 47 by that time. On the exit plan implementation, because the exit plan requires implementation, ongoing implementation with the coordinator as part of the plan to rescind the status, we attend weekly meetings. I think everyone in this council has attended to at least a few meetings. They're weekly. We meet with the business administrator, the human resources coordinator, the financial manager, council clerk, council members, sometimes the controller, and sometimes school district representatives. So it's been an inclusive process. It's been a frank process. I rather enjoy the meetings because we talk about problems the city is facing in an atmosphere of collaboration. So I think it's been working as far as implementing the exit plan. You know, the exit plan has a lot of initiatives that require cooperation, both inside city hall and outside city hall. The coordinator also has had regular phone and written communications with the mayor, the business administrator, council, and others. We receive questions frequently, and we do our best to answer those questions. The city provides us regular monthly financial information. That's critical to our implementation. We have faith in our numbers. There's faith in the city's bookkeeping. We have faith in the fact that the city's financial position is as stated. It is as stated. That was not always the case in the last 20-some years. We also continue the coordination with H J A Strategies. That's the consultant hired by the Chamber of Commerce to work with the city. We also work with whoever else the city asks us to work for, provided it was an exit plan or recovery plan initiative process. We're not guns-for-hire for the city, but we are here to coordinate and cooperate and give as much assistance to the city as we can to get you out of 47. Collective bargaining, the results under the exit plan for collective bargaining, this has always been a sore subject under the former recovery plans, as you know. There's no secrets here, but the city has completed collective bargaining agreements with its fire, police, Department of Public Works, and clerical units. It's important to remember that the city was subject to those expenditure limits under Act 133 whenever they were negotiating a contract. And the recent negotiations that occurred during the recovery plan period and the exit plan period, we examined those contract negotiations for compliance with Act 133 limits, and we gave the city notice that they were in compliance. The fire and police CBAs were negotiated prior to the exit plan. I think it was the end of 2015 or 14, little, don't remember the exact one, but they were outside the scope of the exit plan. However, if they were to be reopened, the exit plan's expenditure would control the terms of the negotiations. There are, it's not, you know, I leave my rose-colored glasses at home when I come to Scranton. There are areas of concern. There are areas of concern across the cities, from the city's perspective, but they also touch on the ability of the city to exit Act 47. These are not secrets. They're certainly in the newspaper all the time. There is a lawsuit against the city in the borough of Dunmore and two law firms involved in the sewer sale proceeds. That has not been satisfied. That, of course, is an area of concern for any municipality. There's a lawsuit regarding the Act 511 revenue caps, which, as esoteric as it is, that has to be litigated. That has to be decided. I think you'll see that on an appeal for many levels, but obviously, that strikes at the heart of the city's ability to collect revenue under its Home Rule Charter, and anything that reduces revenue on one side would have to be made up with expenditure reductions or revenue, corresponding revenue increases from the city's available authorizations. There's also a lawsuit claiming the city is levying a $300 resident fee for garbage is excessive. The city does collect almost $6 million in garbage fee revenue. Similar to the Act 511 revenue cap, that would require an adjustment in expenditures, business policies, and other items that fill a revenue gap. None of those seem to be on the horizon for immediate disposition or settlement, but they are areas of concern. I often am asked at the weekly meetings why the exit plan does not consider the impact, the potential impact of that. Simple answer is it doesn't have an impact just yet. I mean, that is something, the normal concerns of the city. You cannot write a recovery plan or an exit plan that would consider all potential litigation possibilities and all potential outcomes, but it is an area of concern. Further areas of concern that are relative to the governmental environment the city practices under, Lackawanna County still has not reassessed. The voters decided that it wasn't a wise idea to take out debt to finance a reassessment. That does not mean the city's reassessment, the city's property assessments are any better. Certainly doesn't mean the county's assessments are any better. We were vocal in encouraging the county to reassess. I think the city was vocal. That's to your commendation. You were vocal, and the reassessment system in Lackawanna County is outdated and inequitable. The city has no choice, it seems to me, but to pursue conversations to try to get that to be resolved through reassessment. Legacy costs for every city, including Scranton, will continue to consume a larger and larger portion of city revenues. We've seen some growth slowdown in that on the pension side, but OPEB benefits and health care after retirement, those will not slow down. The city's legacy costs for a long time were equal, just the health care costs for a long time in the city was equal to its total real estate collection. That's no longer the case, but it's not unlikely that a larger and larger portion of revenue will be paid for past performance and not current city services. That's a position most municipalities that have legacy requirements for pension and other post-employment benefits are facing in Pennsylvania. Good news, and it's not an area of concern, but it's an area of environment of the government, your exit plan does project surpluses. We saw a surplus. There will be a minor deficit in 2020 based on our projections, and past that period, which would be outside the exit plan period, the city would be out of Act 47, there will be a need for use of fund balance to ameliorate property tax increases or earned income tax increases or other revenue changes. Expenditure reductions are on the horizon if there's a lack of revenue to make this up, but the gap is not as big as it was. The gap is manageable. The gap is in the realm of normal city operations for Pennsylvania. Your health care costs rise, your materials costs rise, your contracts rise. I mean, this is not something that is unknown. It's certainly, it's certainly almost, if we could say Scranton's normal for government operations, it's normal, but it's also normal to understand you must raise revenue or reduce expenses over time. It's not practical to ask the government to continually not raise revenue and simply rely on cutting expenses. Cutting expenses only goes so far until you cut into the actual services you should be providing. A bigger area of concern, because it's across Pennsylvania, that will be your stormwater management responsibility. We touched on that in the recovery, in the exit plan, rather, by allocating a half a million dollars for the studies required to have the city be in compliance with its MS4 permit. That's the separate stormwater system. The city is going to have to develop a stormwater fee schedule of some sort and a mitigation process. It won't be fair to fund that out of property taxes or other tax sources. Most municipalities in Pennsylvania are using fees, and it will be up to the city to come up with a fee-based system that satisfies DEP. It's going to be a DEP requirement, and the city will have to work with that. You do have an engineering firm. I think it's Arcadis. They're preparing a report. There is some movement on that, but as far as, when I say a concern, it's become a big-ticket item for many municipalities across Pennsylvania, not unique to Scranton by any means. What do we see on the horizon? What's upcoming? The ongoing implementation of the exit plan, we'll just continue doing as we are. We're much more comfortable. We monitor the city's financial progress, and I believe that sooner rather than later, we will be issuing a recommendation to terminate the status of Act 47 distress. We also will be coordinating with the city and cooperating on initiatives to increase coordination between the city and the school district. There are many areas of common concern, especially when the city shares the borders of the school district, and I'm happy to say there's been more and more interest in working together with the school district on different items that affect both your tax base, their tax base, and expenditures. In the next year, we will complete, or less than the next year, will be completing the recommendation for your payroll preparation tax. That's the tax that the Act 47 amendments allow the city to consider replacing the business privilege or mercantile tax with. So, and then I would hope by the end of the year, we will have a good recommendation. We prepared one two years ago. That has to be tweaked with new information from the increased activity to business privilege, but it's a revenue-neutral tax, and we have to set the rate, or at least advise the city, or the city will get advice on the rate. This opportunity will end when you exit Act 47, so it's going to be one of the hotburner, frontburner issues for the next year. And as always, because we have to assure the Commonwealth that the city's budget is in compliance with the Act 47 exit plan, we'll be working with the city and business administrator and finance director on the preparation of the 2019 budget and guidance in the 2018 cash position as we get closer and closer to the end of the year. I don't foresee a problem. Our cash projections are solid for this year. I think they're good, but as always, it's just the management of cash flow and paying bills towards the end of the year. So with me, Matt wants to add anything, or Jim, otherwise?
Thank you. Before we open it up for questions, I just want to thank you again for coming in, providing this update. I think on the whole, it's predominantly good news for the city of Scranton, especially from where we were when, I know at least when I first sat on council, to where we are now, specifically with bills being paid on time, things that shouldn't be accomplishments, but they are.
I have to pinch myself, Pat, sitting here saying, I have to pinch myself saying, this is good news now.
Exactly. So, you know, very happy about that. Looking forward to more information on the payroll preparation tax. I think that's something that really can help our business community in the city in having more fair allocation. So again, I want to thank you for coming in. We'll open it up for questions. Guess we'll start with our finance chair and then go down the line.
Thank you. Sure, as you know, I'm a big proponent of reducing the discount rate in the pension funds. So we're at seven and a half now. What is it going to take for us to get to 7.0? You know, as you mentioned, we're going to evaluate further reduction, but I don't want to just evaluate. I want to make it happen. So what is your thoughts on that as far as making that happen?
I don't remember weighing offhand the amount necessary to lower, the increase of the MMO necessary to lower the discount rate by another half a point, because when you lower it, but you do have a new valuation coming up in January 2019. I don't, I think your investments have been good. You've grown the account. You have the additional money to deposit. I think in 2020, in 2019, you meet with your actuary after the assessment is done of the January 1st asset examination is done, and you want to make sure you don't upset the apple cart by pursuing the lower discount rate but increasing the MMO. I think you can, you could decrease that discount rate slower if you have good returns on your investments and your liability isn't increased. You know, the goal here is to increase the funded level of the plans, not just simply to hit targets on the investment side. So those two things work hand in hand, and your actuary is...
Is that something we have control over, or is that something that has to come from the pension board?
I think that's an adminis, I think that's administrative responsibility of the city.
Okay. So we all have an opportunity to weigh in on that, then. All right. What do you think is the, you know, what are the outstanding issues within the exit plan that you feel we have to get done prior to leaving? I know we like to fulfill all of our checklist, but is there anything in particular? Obviously, payroll tax is something that I feel strongly about. I feel that we have to do that, and we're working towards that, but is there anything else in the plan that you feel is something we could assist with or help with that we can move along?
I think it's a matter of taking advantage of your opportunities when you find them now. It's not a, it's not a ship-a-sinking exercise. It's not a plug-in-the-dike exercise. It's really an opportunity now that you can take advantage of the status of Act 47, and I think you hit the nail on the head. The key one is the preparation tax. The payroll prep tax is unusual in that you can only do it under Act 47, and then you get to keep it after that. The city can keep their L S T as long as the pension funds are under a distressed level because that funding mechanism is for a certain level of distress, but I think it's opportunities.
Yeah, I think another one would be a debt management policy for the city. That was included in the plan too as a recommendation, and I think that's another one that the city should have and continue with their workman's comp. The city's made a lot of progress, going back to what Councilman Rogan was saying. You know, years ago, the city was in a lot of trouble with their workman's comp, but the city's made a lot of progress, and that probably should keep moving forward to help bring the city's cost down on their workman's compensation.
That's a good point. So how do we push that initiative, the debt management policy, to make sure that gets done in a timely manner, because that should be actually in place now? So is that something we can help with as well?
I think that could originate with the city's financial advisor, the business administrator. There's plenty of good examples of debt management policies. As you remember, we discussed that as part of the use of proceeds, that, you know, you simply don't want the city to continue in 10 years from now to say, someone decided, well, it's easier to borrow than to raise taxes. And the debt policy is integral to that. There's a policy decision. That's something that can be worked on relatively quickly with the administration and council.
Okay. Because sometimes these things sort of get pushed aside because we're dealing with the day-to-day operation of the city and the numbers game, but I think that that's important to get that policy in place.
Policies are one of those things that you regret not having, and when something happens, and then you sort of, you sort of can ignore them, not putting in place because it's a policy, but when the debate comes 10 years from now, how to finance the city, you want to have clear guidelines for how you would use debt as opposed to use debt for deficit financing. As far as workman's comp, Matt's absolutely right. The workman's comp is outside the scope of the exit plan, but it is huge for the city. There is a lot of progress. This city has made a ton of progress with the labor and industry representatives, understanding there's a change in mindset, there's a change in attitude in Scranton, and I'm not talking about one administration versus the other. I'm talking decades. The city's workman's comp, as you know, has that excess funding under the trust agreement back in 2001 or so. Good progress on the city's safety training, just a lot of communications back and forth with labor and industry. There's some money that could be, as we talked about, it could be freed up. It's not going to happen this year, maybe not next year, but there is money available that the city holds and trusts that could be used for other trust purposes, whether it's OPEB trust or other purchase, other legacy cost reduction.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move it along, and then I may come back to another question later.
Thank you. First question, do you know if there will be a tax increase in the 2019 budget?
I don't know. I can't say yes or no, but I don't see one. I think that the projections that we have are on target, I think. It seems that the city's revenue sources are, as you know, we monitor them, and they seem solid. I'm not the administration, I'm not the councilman, I'm not the budget preparer, but where I sit now, I don't see one, but that doesn't mean there can't be one. That doesn't mean that the city won't need one, and part of my DNA says taxes are necessary part of operating government. And for us to say there should be no tax increase, well, then I can say, let's not fix things. Let's not repair the streets. Let's not do things. You know, it's hand in hand. I understand where you're coming from, Bill, that, you know, taxes are the last resort. You want efficiency and effectiveness, but if the city needs a tax increase, I think what you've learned over the last decade is, you need a tax increase, then put one in.
And part of that too, Bill, yeah, sorry, councilman, but is, you know, our role under Act 47 isn't to prepare the city's budget. That's the business administrators and the city administration. So we don't go into the detail and see all the needs that are out there that the departments are requesting this. Under Act 47, the city puts together a budget, and they give it to us to review, and we look at the big scheme, and then we kind of whittle down, see something that looks, you know, that we need is more investigation, but to say that at this time in July, it's really hard to make that determination without seeing anything from the administration.
And does anyone know why no one from the administration is here at this caucus? Because the mayor and the business administrator were both invited.
It was my understa, yeah, I don't know. The business administrator said he would be here, and from what I understand, there was an issue he had to tend to, but that was, it was my understanding that he was going to be here for question and answer.
Okay.
The presentation was on us, though. It wasn't a city presentation.
Right. My second question is basically about life after Act 47. So could you please explain what special taxing powers the city will lose if and when it exits Act 47, and what the plan and strategy is on making up for that lost revenue? And I'll reference Pittsburgh and Altoona as examples of cities that have just recently left Act 47. So maybe can you touch on some of the challenges on life after leaving Act 47?
I think the biggest challenge is the reassessment issue. You have a stagnant property tax base. Your Act 47 taxes are really just the L S T tax, which was allowed for a second-class A city to continue after Act 47. That will continue until your pension plans are very well-funded. The other taxes are relative to the city's Home Rule status. You have real estate mileage that's not capped. Your earned income tax is not capped, so those are the typical places where Act 47 release from limits would be effective, but you don't have limits. You're in the Home Rule. Your real estate transfer tax is higher than a code city. So when you say what taxes are sunsetted with Act 47, the only tax that sunsetted is an opportunity tax on payroll prep.
Mr. Cross, not to cut you off, but I know I forget otherwise. Would we still have to appear in court yearly to get the S T tax approved like we do now under Act 47?
I don't think so.
No, I don't believe so.
So that would just be, we, the city would be able to enact that?
Right. It's based contention on the status of the city's pensions.
You know, as long as our pensions are underfunded, severely underfunded, we'd be able to enact that tax.
Yeah, and there's definitions in the Act of the level you have to be at for distressed.
Okay.
Yeah, with all court approval, it's in the statute.
Throughout the exit plan, it's mentioned about the legacy costs, and you had mentioned that in your beginning presentation. So do you know the impact of the restoration of retiree healthcare that took place with the fire and police contracts, and what impact that will have on moving forward with the city's budgets?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gunn.
The restoration of retiree healthcare that occurred in the police and fire contracts?
Retiree healthcare? That's funded by the city on a pay-as-you-go. That's not part of the pension?
No, I know that. I'm asking because one of the things that you're pointing out here is that...
Do you have a site for me, a page that I can refer?
Sure. Two five. Cities' operating expenditures will continue to increase annually, being driven by wage increases and increases in employee benefits, in particular, employee healthcare, while the city's operating revenues are projected to remain relatively constant. So if you remember, a few years ago, one of the, and Councilman Evans had the same concern as I about legacy costs, specifically with the restoration of retiree healthcare. So I mean, I don't know if you can comment on that, but do you know what the impact will be, or was that a concern of?
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a, this, one of the contracts, there's no longer retiree healthcare for people hired after a certain time. That was one of the arbitration decisions.
But as for the impact, the impact is, you know, it's in the budgets now.
Yeah.
But that was restored under the...
Yeah, the police and fire contracts restored retiree healthcare.
For a certain class of people, the current, yeah, not for future ones.
Oh, yeah, no, for future.
We don't have a dollar amount of...
For future, yeah.
Well, our assumption is 6%, if I remember correctly, the growth of healthcare costs is 6%.
So you're including that particular legacy cost in the healthcare costs?
Yes. It's in the healthcare projections for that part of the budget at 6%. Obviously, if it comes in at 10% and 12%, then that's going to put a hole in the projections, but we've seen it around 6 and so percent. And the city's self-insured, remember? So some of that is based on the kind of plan you have. You allow a lot of out-of-network, I mean, you don't have a lot of controls on healthcare spending that an indemnity plan would have, where if you were doing something under a blue cross, blue shield. You are self-insured, and it's a pretty expansive coverage for retirees. So 6% was our basis on what we were seeing in the municipal markets for indemnity plans. But yeah, that's always been a threat. As I said in the review, for a long time, the city's healthcare expense was seven and seven, 7 million for active, 7 million for retirees. That was 14 million total. Your real estate taxes bringing you $14 million. So you were paying, all the real estate taxes paid to the city were essentially being assigned to an expense as big as it. Now, if healthcare costs go through the roof, that's a threat, but that's not a threat that's unique to Scranton. If healthcare costs go through the roof, it'll be a market-driven thing, and other cities are going to see it, just like we saw 10 years ago when we saw the doubling over 10 years. The bigger concern was the doubling of the pension or quadrupling of the pension payments since 2009.
Okay. I just want to check through quickly some of the workforce cost containment recommendations in the exit plan. One of them was for short-term disability insurance, that the city will have the right to adjust the terms and conditions of its short-term disability program in order to provide that compensation under the program does not begin until after the employee is unable to work for 14 calendar days. Do you know if that has, it's on page 39. Do you know if that has taken place yet?
Well, it is a recommendation, and it is, the city has the right. I don't know the status of the city's, that would be a question for the human resources director. I don't know the status of that, Mr. Gunn.
Okay. One of the things that we've talked about really over the last four years, and it's workforce recommendation number 17, is concerning the defiant contribution retirement plans, and one of the recommendations is that you recommend that the city undertake an analysis of... analysis of the effects of transitioning city employees away from defined benefit pension plans to defined contribution retirement plans. It says the city may focus its analysis on one or more city departments such as non-represented employees. So, has this occurred yet?
No, that, that was, as, as far as I know, the city is looking at something along those lines for the, it's, it's only applicable to non-represented employees, you can't change the pension plans for the existing contract represented employees.
Right.
And I, I, Matt, I may be wrong in this, but I thought last year there was some examination of that for new hires under, I don't know that it's been anywhere for past just being looked at, but you, you do see that in some municipalities at the, the non-represented administration level and-
I, I will say that my understanding is there's an issue with state law, and I have asked Senator Blake to look into that and see if he can move that along at the state level, so we're allowed to do it. I think right now we're not even allowed to, to do it.
There's, there's those, you know, you have a, you have your own pension, you have your own pension legislation as a 2A city. There's Act 600 for boroughs and townships and first-class townships, then you have cities. So, there, there's a bunch of-
That was the roadblock that, not that the city said they were willing to do it, but-
Right.
-that was the roadblock we were at, at that time, so we're still very much interested in watching, or possibly moving some of the non-union employees into a 401K.
And that, that's a long-term recommendation, as all these exit plans ones are, in the sense that that's a cost center, and you should be looking at ways to match what other people are doing.
One of the other recommendations, and you touched on this, was about the debt management policy. And that would be for the purpose of providing guidelines to us as elected officials and policymakers to ensure that the city does not issue too much debt or issue debt for the wrong reasons, which has been one of the issues historically with the city. And then the recommendation is that a debt management policy should be approved by city council and the mayor. So, do we know where the city is in that process?
No, I don't know where they are in that process, no, I do not.
That's why it was brought up, that's why I brought that up, it's one of the things that we should be concentrating on, the city should be concentrating on moving forward under Act 47, because that was one of the recommendations.
How about the development of a fund balance policy? I noticed, and in your presentation in the, in the beginning, you said that when, you know, we, we exit Act 47, you know, we may need to look to a fund balance policy if we experience, you know, loss in revenue or increase in expenditures, so. And it says here that the city should be in a position to start to generate a surplus from operations that can be used to seed this fund balance. So, can you give us an update on where the city is with that policy?
The, the, the city, as I understand it, operates under the idea that GFPA guidelines and the guidelines for a fund balance, the nice thing is the city has a fund balance. The fund balance, as you can see by the projections, is not a huge fund balance, but it will be a fund balance available when you have a deficit projected in 2020. The fund balance policy is essentially based on the percentage of expenditures and what you would use the fund balance for. I think that goes hand in hand with the development of a debt policy. They're very similar.
And you don't know if that's being currently developed, or is that something that we're going to see within the next year or two years?
Well, I think, I think that's a, you gotta remember where we were when we put the exit plan together on, under the requirements. You were in the middle of doing sewer system sale, parking system sale, you were allocating proceeds. I think those policies that we're talking about now are those that are rightfully the next, the targets for the next two to three years. You know, that's to say it should be done soon, but you, you had a change in administration as far as business administrator, you had some, some change of, of the, of the employees there. But that's a, I think that's a policy that needs to be examined for the next year or two. I don't, I, I would not like the exit plan to be successful and the city not have a debt policy.
Yeah. One of the ways to build a fund balance is to have excess revenues over expenditures. So, that's a total, and a total, looking forward down the line, you, you can either integrate that and slowly, you know, depends on revenues coming in and expenses. How much when you do, when the city does the budget, do they want an excess that they're going to build towards a fund balance? So, you might say, every year, we're going to have an excess of $700,000, and we'll do that for four years until we get a fund balance of $3,500 or 3.5 million dollars. You know, when in that, whatever that target, like Jerry mentioned, GFPA is like 8%, but whatever the city decides that target is, that's what you're going to have to set your revenues and expenditures, because you're creating a fund balance based on what's left over from your budget.
Okay, thank you. And I, you mentioned this before as well, the progress with the workers' comp funding. On page 54, there, there was a recommendation to conduct an independent actuarial evaluation. Has that been done yet, or is that in the works, and when can we expect to see that?
I, I think that was, I think that was performed, that's part of the, that's part of the, the city's arguments for the release of the reserve fund. I don't know the number offhand on that, but Wayne, if we, you know, Councilman Evans, I think we, we've discussed that the liabilities are reducing year over year, that they've been smaller and smaller amounts as, whether it's age of employees or, or safety practices in the workplace, the city has been spending less on workman's comp claims. So, the, the actuarial examination of that, I think, is, is going to show that you have, you have less of a need for a huge reserve.
Thank you. Also, on page 62, one of the recommendations, recommendations that was very interesting to read, and I think I mentioned this to you gentlemen the last time that we, that you came before us, was the memorandum, the pension benefit memorandum of understanding. Says the memorandum should control the timing and limit the amount of any pension benefit enhancements for at least 10 years, beginning in 2017. Moreover, any disputes between the bargaining units in the city that could have a material adverse impact on the funding of the pension plans as estimated or calculated by the actuary to the plans should be adjudicated or resolved prior to any significant contributions or made from the sewer sale proceeds to the pension funds. So, do you know if, I haven't seen it come before us, but is that in, in the process of being worked out?
No, I think that, I think, Councilman, that's in the, I, I think that's in the position of controlling pension costs going forward and as part of negotiations. Other cities have tried that to have a understand, look, we're going to put a lot of money in your account, we would like not to, as, as we, as we strive towards fully funded, 100% funding, you don't want the pension funding to be a subject of negotiations where the arguments may, well, we have money and we're, we're not using money, it's overfunded, we're paying for it with extra money, which is not true. So, the, I, that would require part of your collective bargaining process, as we mentioned, there are no open contracts. But as this exit plan looks forward for three years and even beyond, that's a policy the city should be looking at, either in the next round of negotiations or whenever the subject of pension enhancements is brought up. It's, I see, I've seen in other cities, when the pension gets to a 100% funded level and even, even above, one of the misconceptions is, well, there's free money, let's enhance benefits, and that's simply not true in pension accounting.
Okay, thank you. One of the other things that caught my attention was your recommendation here for the city to memorialize the current rules and regulations from the pension boards in one place, for them to update their ordinances to the extent necessary and empower both city officials and aggregate pension board officials to enforce all aspects, including offsets and disability pension reforms. Has that been done yet? And that's on page 63.
That has not been done to my knowledge, and you would know it also because it'd be consolidating ordinance, but, no, but it is something that I think the city needs to consider in the exit plan process, or even in just the good management of the pension fund. You often see conflicting opinions on what's available to pensions or not because the ordinances are not well codified, and that was one of the issues that we're pointing out there.
Okay, is that something that the city is currently working on? Is that something that the city is currently working on now, or is that something that-
I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask, city solicitor, the coun, I don't know the status of that, no.
Okay.
But it is not, remember, the recommendations in the exit plan are not contingent upon the coordinator providing a, a notice that the city can be released from distressed status, these are-
Oh, I understand that, but I mean, you would agree with me that these are all things that the city should do anyways, even if we did not have an Act 47 coordinator and-
Yeah, these are on the cities, yeah, they should be on the to-do list, no question.
Right, and I think that some of these were in the, the plan in 2015, so, I mean, it is a little bit concerning that there's not more movement on some of these things. Am I wrong in thinking that?
Well, yeah, we, well, like I said, in the exit plan, a lot of these are recommendations. And, you know, we can't implement all these because a lot of them need negotiations with contracts with the, the unions, but when we put these together, like you mentioned, this is kind of guidance for the city to say, this is what we've seen, this is what we think would help the city in the long term benefit, whether revenue-wise or expenditure-wise, and that's why they're in here. And, you know, this is a three-year plan, and we know a lot of these wouldn't get done in three years, they couldn't get done in three years, but it's more, this plan was put together to give the city kind of like a roadmap, and this is what we're seeing, this is what you guys can use to help move your, the city forward. And once you get the post, as you mentioned before, what do we do after, these would help the city going into the long term.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gahn, these, these recommendations, as Matt pointed out, is, they're in the form of ameliorating expenditure increases. In the past, and, and I wouldn't go as far as the 2015, I go back to the 1992 recovery plan, you'll find things in our plan that have been asked about the city for years, but if you can reduce the growth rate of expenditures through these practices and protect the city from whether it's the pension codification, whether it's the, the assumption of interest rates lowering, things that go to the expenditure side, you'll have less of a need for revenue increases. And revenue increases have been part of the problem with the city, that we've been reluctant to cut expenses, or at least do things that are necessary in the short term, because we then have to raise taxes in the long term, and we result, we don't raise taxes, we, it brings us back to the deficit situation. But your point's well-taken, all these recommendations are expenditure-driven, so you can take the pressure off revenue knee increases.
Right.
We are running short on time. Councilman Donahue or Perry, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just have two quick ones, if I could. I know it's very difficult and it's impossible to, you know, evaluate and, and come up with terms with all the litigation that we have out there, but what is our plan as litigation starts to come off the shelf and gets resolved? Will we reformat the exit plan each time something settles, every time a shoe drops, to know where we stand, or are we waiting for all these to clear? What, what's, what's kind of our plan here?
Well, I would say that the plan for that would be, that's a hypothetical question, we'd have to wait till any of the final orders given and evaluated and see what we can do. It's hard to say right now on a question like that.
Okay.
You know, it, it really is, you know, as, as a final order would come down from an arbitrator or a court, we would evaluate the, the impact on the city's financial condition and make a recommendation on what we can do, yeah.
And, and the elephant in the room, obviously, 511. If 511, let's say that gets caught up in appeals and that goes on for quite a while, how does that affect our, our exit from 47? Will we still be able to exit if 511 is, is in appeals for an extensive amount of time?
In my mind, the law is clear, the city has an exit termination date, a distressed termination date of 2021, I guess, is it 2020? 2020, that's the law says, three years, you will be out. We believe our recommendations work towards that. Those lawsuits could occur outside of Act 47 if you were out of Act 47, so, that's not to make light of them, they can severely cripple the city, but you have, unfortunately, you have the revenue availability under real estate, because if Act 511 is taken off you, then you have nowhere to go but real estate. But the, the law is clear, the city will be out of Act 47 before 2020.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, I just have two quick questions, too. In the chapter of the exit plan that deals with workforce-
Yep.
-an emphasis is put on the fact that the restoration of the city's fiscal health can't be achieved without controlling its future personnel expenses. So, when I compare the 17 budget with actual costs, overtime is what concerns me the most. Your 17 estimate for total overtime for police, fire, and DPW is about 1 million, when in reality, we spent about 1 point, oh, just close, just short of 1.6. So, so going forward, is that something that we have to control to bring down, or is it just a matter of budgeting that correctly?
Overtime's one of those things that are very difficult to budget. We, we have to make an estimate based on historical trends, but a bad storm, a bad public emergency-
Yes.
Yes, anything can throw overtime into, into disarray. It was, it's then up to the fiscal management of the city to adjust as they go forward to, to try to control that budget line item. But overtime is one of those things you just, you, you hope that you have the ability to do it when you, when you need it. And if it happens early enough in the year, then you can adjust spending in other areas, but, yeah, that's a difficult one.
It might, I'm not sure if I'm correct or not, as far as how it might, and again, you're not, you don't read the budgets either, so you're not exactly an expert on this, but I know there's a lot of special assignments that are done. And I believe there's a secondary line item that we get compensation back for spending, and I know a lot of that time, obviously, most of our guys in all our departments are full-time, so any special assignment work they would get would be overtime. So, I believe there's, there's a, there's a revenue line that we get back that kind of offsets some of that, but, you know, there, I'm not disagreeing with the fact that maybe there could be a better job going from budget to actual-
Yeah, all overtime is not the same.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right, Councilman Perry, they're, all overtime is not the same.
And I was just looking at the, not as it's split up as longevity, you know, the court overtime or the education either, that was just overtime. Second question I have is based off historical economic trends, it's not all the realm of possibilities that we were to have, you know, we were to go into an economic recession, I guess, in the next two years. So, is the city's fiscal health stable enough to be able to weather, you know, say, a mild recession hypothetically?
I, I think-
In your opinion?
I, I think it has, the city actually weathered, it doesn't seem in hindsight, because we were through this, but we weathered the great recession, I thought, rather well. I don't remember EIT, one of your, one of your three, three legs of your financial picture. It did go down, it went all around the Commonwealth, but I don't know that it went down as much as you saw in suburban Philadelphia, South Central Pennsylvania, and even on Western Pennsylvania. Real estate taxes, it's kind of a bright side of the crummy reassessment we have, the crummy assessment practice we have, that doesn't, that goes down a little bit, but it doesn't reflect changing markets, so you were sort of insulated from the, the housing crash. So, between-
I, I know, you know, I've been involved with the city, well, I was born and raised here, but involved in my capacity with the state, and now, God, 13, 15 years now, Jerry was much longer, and I can honestly say, the time I've been here, this is the strongest, financially, we've seen the city, probably since 1992.
Yeah.
Now, you want to throw a recession in there, you know, I would say that every municipality is going to be, what's your financial, financial condition at that time? If you're already financing a budget deficit at the end of the year and you go into recession, you're in a lot of trouble. But now the city has some money, and, and what we've already talked to before dovetails into this with the debt management and the general fund. That, again, is another crux, that if something does go along in the general economy as a whole, that's there to help support the city. You have a general fund policy, you have a general fund money to help you with any imbalances that might impact the finances of the city to get you through. Debt management policy, how do we do this if we do run a budget shortfall during this economic recession? How do we borrow the money to, to cover up that budget deficit, you know, how much and everything?
Okay. That's such, that's, that, I, if, I wouldn't want the, the caucus to end without emphasizing, Matt's point is right on, I mean, that is critical. The city's attitude towards governing and financial management has significantly changed. In the past, it was, we don't want to raise taxes, we don't want to spend money, and figure it out, and expenses just kept going. Now, there's, there's, there's a cooperation between council and the administration, there is an attitude, I think, on the part of the employees, that we're all part of this together. It is a much more healthy, financially healthy city than it was 10 years ago, 15 years ago. I, I think, I, and I'm, it's not an exaggeration, I think that the 2012 experience focused wonderfully people's concentration on what was really important in the city, and I think fiscal health came to the forefront. And I, I can, I can honestly say that's one of the underpinnings for us being able to come here today with an exit plan that isn't full of holes and borrowing money and refusing to pay bills, and, I mean, literally, it, as I said to many people, I sleep at night now because our meetings in Scranton are about what can we do to improve the city, not how can we get through the next payroll.
We do appreciate you coming in, we do have to start, we're already, actually, already a few minutes late for our regular meeting. I know some of us have some additional questions that will, I'm sure you'll be happy to answer after, after the fact, but thank you again for coming in, and we appreciate the update.
Thanks.
We'll start our regular meeting in five minutes.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, equal, with liberty and justice for all and all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahan?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Sorry. I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 592018 and place it in seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm going to be voting no. I'm going to detail additional reasons why I don't think we should bring this back for a final vote, because there are discrepancies between Mr. Abrahamson's firm's first submittal, supplemental submittal, and his second supplemental submittal. And quite frankly, I mean, I think this is ridiculous that we're going to allow a law firm to do work with the city with their track record over the last few years. So I'll be voting no. And then I'll have an explanation at the end of the meeting.
Just to clarify, this motion is just to bring it up for a final vote. I'm sure we'll have a debate regarding the merits of the legislation. Many citizens wishing to discuss this piece of legislation can do so during fourth order citizens' participation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes have it and so moved. Please dispense with the reading in a minute.
Third order, 3A, Tax Assessors Report for Hearing Date Held July 25, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Tax Assessors Report for Hearing Dates to be held August 8, 2018, and August 15, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Date Held July 18, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting Held June 20, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3E, Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held August 8, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
I actually have a few, if you don't mind. First of all, the Friends of Connors Park presents the 13th Annual Bob McGaw 5K Run One Mile Walk. It's a $20 registration fee, Sunday, August 26, 2018. Race starts at 9:00 a.m. at Connors Park, 515 Orchard Street in Southside. To sign up, you can go to runsignup.com/BobMcGaw. Also, the proceeds will benefit St. Francis's Sissy Kitchen in scholarships for four 2019 graduates. Also at the race, we'll be giving our 2nd Annual City Council Cup to the winner of a three-race series to the one around the Grand Races and the McGaw Race, as far as that's concerned. Also, what is being billed as Lackawanna Arts Weekend downtown will be a pretty exciting place this weekend. This Friday, of course, is First Friday. Always a great event. There is also the 14th Annual Scranton Jazz Festival on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The main stage is at the Radisson Hotel, and there will be entertainment all over downtown at various venues during the Jazz Walk each evening. Check out the artists and schedule at Scranton Festival, scrantonjazzfestival.org. Also, Scranton made and their dedicated group of or, are the organizers of the Lackawanna Arts Fest on Cordell Square, which begins at 12:00 p.m. on Saturday until 8:00 p.m. It is the area's largest arts festival and features over 150 vendors, live music, food, interactive art, and much more. And that's all I have.
I have one. The National Night Out will be held Tuesday, August 7, at Scranton High School from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event is held nationally each year on the first Tuesday in August to promote police and community partnership. There will be a lot of activities for kids, including finger painting, free food. There'll be entertainment and police and fire demonstrations. And I know I talk about this every year because it's just, it's a really good event for the community. And it's, it's just something for the kids to see up close, all the equipment that the police and the fire have. It's, it's, it's something special. So if you have the opportunity, bring the kids out to see it. Thank you.
The North Scranton Neighborhood Association will hold their monthly meeting at Weston Park on Monday, August 6, at 6:00 p.m. Topic of the meeting will be the proposed development in North Scranton concerning the new construction of apartment buildings in the area of the Hollows and Whale Street area. Any neighbors interested in what is being proposed for development in this area should attend this meeting at the park on August 6. Thank you.
Today will be council's last meeting before the August recess. Council will resume meetings on Monday, September 10, at 6:00 p.m. On Monday, September 3, City Hall will be closed for the Labor Day holiday. DPW is off that day as well. Refuse and recycling will be one day behind the week of that holiday.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Well, this is the last gasp of July. Does anybody have an update on the status of the audit?
We'll find out at the 2:00 panel meeting. If I find out that it's ready, I'll give you a call.
Okay. In preparing for the caucus on the exit plan, I took a look at the 2015 revised recovery plan. And it says there in bold print, you know, certainly large print, that the audit should be prepared and released in accordance with the date on the Home Rule Charter, which means as of today, the audit is 60 days late. That's bad enough. But keep in mind that Rossi and Ross, Rossi and Rossi had some legitimate problems when it was late. Things like Parking Authority was, would not give the financial statements. Well, that's no longer an issue. But now we have Rainey and Rainey assisting for the last couple years, the business administration staff with audit preparation work, and yet it's still late. I would very much like to know specific reasons or what the bottlenecks are where we're not meeting the Home Rule Charter date. And if it's unreasonable to have it out by May 31, and we ought to be amending the Home Rule Charter. But we can't play both sides of the coin. And what about the status of the Arcadis Stormwater Management Study? Is that anywhere near completion and released to the public? No. Okay. You know, I'm going to have my second baby now. Okay, I'm working on baby number two. Okay. In listening to the caucus on the exit plan and Mr. Cross's comments about the Stormwater Management Study, this Stormwater Fee Schedule, which he says will probably be forthcoming, do any of you think that that might hit the 2019 budget? Or is that going to be kicked into 2020 or later?
Well, if it was, if it was set up as an authority, it wouldn't be in the city's budget.
Okay, so it's probably not going to hit in 2019 then. But it's something we can look forward to down the road in 2020 or later, I would assume. I hope that when we get the results from Arcadis, that it gives us some kind of handle or ballpark figuring on what kind of annual fee we, homeowners will be looking at, so we can plan ahead. Do you have any parting comments, Mr. Rogan, before the recess on how we're looking at pension reform?
I'll discuss it a little bit more under more shots.
Okay. All right. And let's see. One thing I didn't hear, and maybe he did it while I took my bathroom break, but something that stays in the back of my mind and worries me, and that is the fate of the school district. Should they have to be taken over by the state? And what will be the overall impact on the city's credit rating? Because you can't really divorce the Scranton School District from the city of Scranton all that well. So keep that in the back of your minds when budget planning comes up. I'm hoping that when we reconvene in September, we will have the Arcadis study in hand. We will have the audit in hand. We'll be well on our way to budget discussions. And I hope you all have a safe and happy August and enjoy your holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerard Hetman?
Good afternoon, council. Gerard Hetman from the Lackawanna County Department of Community Relations. To begin this afternoon, our annual Art in the Park series continues this Tuesday, July 31, at McDade Park. 10:00 a.m. to noon, a free afternoon of art activities for children and accompanying adults. And that's actually normally the last Art in the Park for the season. But this year, our date at Covington Park for Art in the Park was postponed due to weather. So we have the last Art in the Park next Tuesday, August 7. It's also 10:00 a.m. to noon at Covington Park. So two dates left in the series, completely free. We have about 10 to 12 artists at each location, hands-on art activities for kids and the adults that come with them. So come one, come all, and enjoy Good Afternoon in the Park with Art in the Park. Second, just a reminder that Scranton tomorrow's drive-in downtown movie series will continue with two more dates in August on Courthouse Square. That would be August 9, It's Despicable Me 3, and August 16 is Coco. The movies begin at dusk, of course, and subject to weather. Normally, when Scranton tomorrow would make a call about changing the date due to weather, they'll let our office know. So we'll try to share that on the county's social, social media channels and website as quickly as we can. So again, two more dates left. Look forward to seeing lots of folks on Courthouse Square for the movies on the square. Third, the Lackawanna County Commissioners Fall Blood Drive is set for Friday, September 7, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Lackawanna County Administration Building. We ask that folks make an appointment in advance. It helps to write across the plan so that they know when to have certain personnel there, if there's going to be a busy time or not. Just give our office a call at 570-963-6800 and ask to speak to me. I'm the Blood Drive Coordinator for the county. So anybody who wants to come down, especially if you live or work downtown, we welcome your donation. And looking forward to try to get about 20 donors. We shoot for, we typically get right around that number. I think our all-time high was 24 the first time that we did this back in 2016. So if we could get more than that, it'd be great. But we try to shoot for around 20. And we welcome anybody to come out and, and join us in giving the gift of life. Fourth, a really exciting opportunity here, and the county's thrilled to host this. It's not actually our program. It's done by this group. But we're happy to host it at McDade Park. And we have a large poster for it here. It's called the Remembering Our Fallen Traveling Memorial. And it's a photograph of war memorial that honors the lives of more than 4,700 U.S. service members who have given their lives in action since the September 11 attacks. It travels around the country. Again, has a photo of each service member honored, along with a brief description of their service and their life. It's going to be at McDade Park from September 7 through September 11. It will be available to view during normal park hours, which is dawn to dusk. There'll be a special opening ceremony for the event, for the exhibition on Sadre, September 8, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Anyone that has information, please contact Kendra Lynn at 570-262-3572, or at tayken1020@yahoo.com. Really neat way to pay tribute to a lot of folks who have given their lives in defense of our country. And we're happy to host that at McDade. Look forward to everyone coming out and checking it out if you can, and take a moment to pay tribute to those individuals. Also, save the date for our fall events. I know we won't be here for a little while, so just keep these in mind. Our Senior Health Fair will take place on Friday, September 14, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at PNC Field. And our Public Safety Fair and Open House at the 911 Center, better known as Heroes Day, takes place on Saturday, September 22, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lackawanna County Center for Public Safety, better known as the 911 Center. Both of those events are free and open to the public. And last but not least, we'll just share some info with your office via Penn State Extension in Lackawanna County regarding the Spotted Lanternfly. Some of you guys may have heard about this in passing. The Spotted Lanternfly is an invasive pest species that's not native to Pennsylvania or to the United States for that matter. But certain groups of the species have migrated primarily into Berks County and the Reading area in recent years. About four years ago, it was first detected there. And some of them have spread around the eastern part of the state. There hasn't been any detected in Lackawanna County yet. But Penn State Extension, the State Department of Agriculture, are trying to raise awareness of this. Because when the pest settles and starts to breed, it can affect various plant species that are important for gardening, but also for certain farming and different industries that rely on those plants and crops. This is a pest that can do damage to those. So we encourage everyone to check out the information. We'll leave some paper copies with you. But there's more info available via agriculture.paa.gov from the Department of Agriculture, or extension.pdu.edu from Penn State Extension's office around the state. And that's all we have. Thank you as always.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Elman.
Don't worry, Tim. I didn't tell nobody what Stormy Daniels said about you. I'm a man of my word.
Oh, jeez, now, now my wife watches this.
I know you were scared. I was going to say something.
I'm, I'll, I'll get you.
That leaves me with you. Yeah.
I know I'm in trouble.
I know. You seem to be the leader for the reassessment battle, so I, I guess I could pick on you. Why is everyone avoiding putting in black and white where these houses are, these addresses of these two houses, what they were appraised for, what they, they cost, what they, all the information. There's nothing said except some stupid statement saying, "I'm overpaying. I'm overpaying." I bet everybody out here thinks they're overpaying. That's no way to have a lawsuit.
Just so you know.
You people are deliberately avoiding facts for some reason.
You have to let me talk once in a while. You can't just, you know.
I've tried to find out. Nobody'd say a word.
The information is on the court document. I'll give you, if you want the addresses, I'll get them for you. It's public record.
The only, I talked to that, I talked to Boris, and you picked a real one there to dictate your Monday's meeting to. He told me, "I don't know what I'm talking about." He said that you said, "There is no way in the world taxes are going to go up." I said, "What about all this money spent?" He said, "We're going to have a bond issue. Taxes aren't going to go up." Where do these people come from? When I sold cars, I never could find no one that dumb. Really. Well, every once in a while, somebody came by, but very seldom. I, I just can't understand what there's a secret. You know, I guess that, I guess that your agenda seems to be to tax us out of debt. And from what I read about that community project, justice project, they want to make Scranton into a Hazelton. One of their sole programs is to resettle illegals. Has anybody, has anybody out there looked at their computer and seen what their agenda is? I'll tell you, their agenda would destroy what's left of the city. I, I don't know where you people think, there is no way that there's probably a thousand houses, people hanging on to their houses right now by their fingertips, and everybody's talking about going up a couple hundred dollars when this is over. I promise you, every time I go to the grocery store, I talk to two, three people. That's probably more than all five of you put together, talked to during the week. And it's a great sadness. It's, it's just not there no more. And I don't understand what the hell we need so many apartments for. I had coffee this morning at 6 o'clock with a successful businessman. He said he doesn't know why there's so many apartments. He said all they do is get grants, loans, tax forgiveness. It costs nothing but the taxpayers a bunch of money like, like Charles. That, I'm going to bid. I want to bid at the next tax sale. And I want to see 426 Mulberry on that sheet. And I want to see some of those other businesses bidding on their five years not paying taxes. I want them on that sheet to sell. You, you don't mind taking somebody's house away for 1,500, $2,000? What about all these properties, hundreds of thousands of dollars on them? It doesn't make sense. I'm going to bid. I better see 426 Mulberry. And I mean it. I found out this morning what I have to do to be legally bid on properties, or else I'm going to find out why it's not on there. Y'all have a good summer.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry. You guys, I hope you three and four get sunburned. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good afternoon, Marie Schumacher. On June 18, council president announced the city's pools, other than the NAOG, those being Weston Park, Weston Field, and Connell Park, did not have opening dates due to staffing issues. All of the lifeguards had not yet passed. All of the lifeguards had not yet been hired. Please provide the dates these three pools actually opened during Fifth Order. Thank you. Mr. Evans, you are adamant regarding the county reassessment property. I am adamant the city perform a HUP test to determine which of the nonprofits are entitled to be property tax exempt. This is something within the purview of the city and has been in all the recovery plans and is in the exit plan. As Finance Chair, I would like to know why you are pushing a county reassessment while overlooking an element of a recovery plan for which you voted.
I'm not overlooking it.
Further.
I'll answer that in motions.
Okay, thank you. Further, Mr. Evans, you continue to say a reassessment would be revenue neutral. As I understand the assessment law, reassessment does have a windfall prevention clause, though it does provide for a maximum percentage increase. In the case of Lackawanna County, a county of the third class, I recall the 21st Century Company, which was awarded the Cordera-Munchak reassessment, that maximum increase would be 5% for Lackawanna County. So if the city's assessment were to rise by 5%, how could taxes not go up, save for council approving a millage adjustment? Okay, next issue. Commonwealth Court, this is sort of a cleanup of the first six months, although it's short, not because there aren't other items. Commonwealth Court rejected the position the city took regarding the Airbnb. Is the city contesting this ruling, and if not, why is the status of a revised ordinance... What is the status of a revised ordinance making clear where bed and breakfast establishments are allowed?
I'll answer that for you, too.
Idea sessions began in 2015, but rapidly petered out. In January of this year, these sessions were reconstituted, complete with a logo. The first session was held on January 22nd. Here we are, six months later, without a second session. Have these idea sessions gone into hibernation for another three years? If not, when will the next session be held, and what will be the subject? Street cleaning seems to be behind schedule. I would still like to know why properties east of East Mountain Road were excluded, and since the sediment will be going into the storm drains, do we have a vacuum truck to clean the accumulating sediment from the drains? Do you know... Is that yes or no?
The sediment gets sucked up into the street sweeper, and then he has to go and dump that.
No, no. We're not getting one. You don't understand. I brought this up before. We are not on the schedule at all, and all that stuff's going in, and it goes in on a regular basis. I mean, once a year does not get the debris that's on the street. We have one truck for 26 square miles.
I understand that.
But so when it goes in, that's what you do. You take the drain thing off and you suck the stuff out. Do we have that vacuum truck?
I don't believe we do, no, but I can double-check on that.
Okay, if not, I would suggest we put at least one in the... Or rental of it for a certain period of time. If we're going to start taking storm water seriously, we need to start... Keep the sediment from building up, which brings up again Mr. Cerebro. Lenny and Jean were here, and they requested a meeting to get the sediment out of the pond there, retention pond there. What has happened to that meeting? Has it occurred? And if not, when will it be scheduled?
Meeting has not occurred. The mayor did not get back to me yet on that.
Okay. Do you know what happened to that hole in the Youngs, and what happened? Did Lenny's garage get flooded again with those storms last week?
I haven't talked to him, so I'm not sure.
It's just pitiful. Has a procedure yet been implemented for how sewer bills that are returned as undeliverable are handled? Okay. I will sit down and listen to the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address Council?
Al Young, Scranton resident, taxpayer. Council members, this may be one of those days that you wish never happened. We are back to square one, and I'm sick and tired of being held hostage by this city. We take one step forward, and the Law Department decides that we're going to take five or six steps backward. Now, to go back about three years ago, our mayor stood with a person that is a friend of mine, but is in the public eye, with his appointed engineer. And the statement was, "We are not," and I repeat, "we are not," going to do anything for Meadow Brook Creek. Now, this shows me that the entire administration, elected and appointed, do not care for anything but themselves. This administration really is NFG, as it stands. The Law Department thinks that we were born yesterday. I'm sorry, but this is crazy, when in fact they're the ones that need to go back. The Law Department needs to go back to finishing school and learn how not to lie, because they have lied continuously or delayed continuously over the last three years. Now, you heard the statement about people that live across the tracks? Well, Green Ridge right now is across the tracks as far as the city of Scranton is concerned. There's no one in the administration that gives a damn for the people in Green Ridge. They'll spend money elsewhere, but not out there, and this is a joke. All you want from us in Green Ridge is our tax dollars, but the hell with the repairs. Quite frankly, you're going after landlords. The city of Scranton is the worst landlord around. They own the property that is in question in my backyard, and they will not repair it. Now, I have a reply from the Law Department that was dated July 18th, and I was going to read segments from it, but when it comes right down to it, when it's all interpreted, it's legal jargon that takes the whole harmless agreement out, but it's rewording in a roundabout Now, I think quite honestly, Council needs to grow a pair and get together and take Dave Bolzoni and sit down with city administration and the Law Department and get this thing fixed. Now, they've also... They come along, they want us to eliminate the lawsuit. We offered that a year and a half ago, but they wanted to delay it. They didn't like the way that the terms were mentioned. So I have something here. I have a sample, a simple solution. Fix the problem, and the suit disappears. Or continue to play hardball, continue to play hardball, and we'll find out who strikes out or hits the home run. I hope it's me that hits the home run. Now, also in this situation with the letter from the Law Department, there was an issue about the DEP sending for an RFP dated June 18th. Does anybody on Council know anything about this? Probably not, but I have the records here. DEP is requesting an RFP to start work, to look after the situation, and it's $6.9 million. $6.9 million. Wow. Now, why in the hell is it starting now, after all of this? I'm sorry, but I am really sick and tired of standing in front of you people, asking for help, begging for help, and I get nothing from the Law Department but walking in reverse. I wish you folks would all get together. Seriously, the five of you, take Mr. Dave Bolzoni down and sit down with this administration and get something done. If DEP gets on this thing, it's going to be another six or seven years before I see the light of day in that tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address Council?
Fifth order, five emotions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Well, first, Mr. Young, last time we spoke, things are going in the right direction. I mean, it's... I'm heartbroken. I don't know the ins and outs of decisions or the legality of it, but that's a phone call I'll definitely make to find out one way or the other, because as far as I know, anytime anything's been put in front of us, we've done nothing but taken care of it as fast as we could to help your issue. And to hear all these snags come back on a legal issue is just... It's very disheartening, and I know I don't have to just speak for myself on this. I speak for all of us when we hear this. It's just... I mean, this has been going on too long, and I'll make some... I'll make phone calls or go take a visit, take a walk today, and see if I can at least get my head around what's... Why the ping pong game? I don't understand it, but I can't talk too intelligently about it because I don't know the ins and outs yet. With that said, there was an issue at the 3,200 block, the end of the 3,200 block of Powell Court, there's a blocked storm drain. I don't know if it's a single or dual use, so I don't know the responsibility, if it lies on us or the water company. So if we can make our first step to get the ball rolling and send that off to Public Works for a site check, I actually have some pictures, Lori, I'll email them with you with the request, and they can get out there. But I know this is... It's blocked solid. There's just... There's no room for anything. I wasn't even sure there was a drain there. I went there a couple times, take pictures, and it was just puddle, 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 and then finally, after a week or two of dry spells, I actually got it. I saw the drain. Also, my city email has been hit or miss with me most of the summer. It was working good for a little while, but I just got a bunch in all at once, so I'm going to answer all those emails today after the meeting. But if you would, if anybody does want to contact me, if you'd use an alternate email so it's a little bit more reliable, and that email address is timperryccv@hotmail.com. Tim Perry, ccv@hotmail.com. And that way, I can just be a little bit more fluent with the email responses and not, you know, have to wait until, you know, when the city email address wants to work. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Don Hewitt, any motions or comments?
The only thing I have, Ms. Reed, would you be able to send a letter to the Law Department requesting an update on what's going on, to set up a meeting to request an update on what's going on with the Young property? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
A few. First of all, my understanding of reassessment is revenue neutral in the first year, and 5% in the year following reassessment, which could be normal for any city or municipality to be allowed to do that. As far as the HUP test and reassessment, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think actually reassessment helps with the HUP test, because we're going to be identifying properties as we go. I don't disagree that we should be doing that now. The administration is responsible for that. I've chided them on several occasions to do that, and I'll continue to do that as well. To my knowledge, the only entity that ever has done that is Allegheny County, so we would be the first, at least on this side of the state, to challenge the properties and see if they are, should be classified as non-tax exempt via the HUP test. On the Airbnb, the funding is in place for a new zoning code. The RFP is out, and we expect that to be started either the last quarter of this year or the first quarter of 2019. The information Marie has been asking for, and the cash flow statement I have, I received it today, and I'll send it to you via email. I didn't get a response yet from Evan, but if someone might get a response, I'll let you know as well. On another topic, today I'm going to talk a little bit about the subject of smaller locally-owned businesses, and what I'm going to discuss today is another outgrowth of the idea session, as a matter of fact, that was mentioned before, on small business. To that point, I'm going to periodically propose policy changes within the city of Scranton that will help and enhance our existing and small business community. First, I would like to expand on what a locally-owned business means to our community. I think we can all agree that they certainly play a central role in any healthy city and are among the best economic engines that drive a city to advancing growth and opportunity. Small business ownership has historically been a pathway to the middle class for generations of Americans and Scrantonians alike, and it continues to be a vital tool for expanding prosperity. According to the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, there are five key reasons that we should all support the small and locally-owned business community. And by the way, when I use the word "we," I mean "we" as local public officials. Number one, local small businesses are linked to higher incomes and less inequality. Number two, entrepreneurship fuels job creation. Three, independent businesses generate more tax revenue at a lower public cost. I'll wait for that to go by. Four, local businesses foster community cohesion and well-being. And five, community-scale businesses reduce pollution and improve environmental sustainability. So the first policy change I would like to discuss is the purchasing and procurement policy of the city of Scranton. Studies have shown that when local governments purchase goods and services from local independent businesses, there's a positive feedback loop that is created, which increases economic activity, excuse me, employment and tax revenue. So in effect, you are using the tool of city spending to foster economic development by sourcing products and services locally. To that end, I've asked B.A. Bolzoni to review the city's current purchasing and procurement policy with an eye towards buying more locally. It's my understanding that we're doing some of that now, but I'm not aware of a formal policy to that effect that is currently in place. I hope to have something to report on when we return from our recess, and I'm confident that is something we can easily achieve. Also, the concept may be a great opportunity for the Shared Services Committee working with the school district. It shouldn't always be about the lowest price for a product or service. As I noted earlier, keeping our money local allows it to be recycled within our community... Busy out there today. ...within our city and at a lower public cost, and results clearly indicate that many economic benefits beyond a lower price are created by simply buying local. Again, I can't stress enough how important maintaining and growing our locally-owned small business community is. It is our responsibility to remove government obstacles and to encourage their growth in every way we can. We should all be absolutely committed to making this happy. A quick note on parking, especially downtown. I'd like to remind everyone that on-street parking in the downtown is free after 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and all day and evening Saturday and Sunday. During those timeframes, there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of free parking spaces throughout the downtown, so please take advantage of that and visit our businesses and restaurants, shop, stop for dinner, even take a yoga class, whatever you want to do. We have a diverse and interesting downtown, as well as a diverse neighborhood commercial area, so please take advantage of all that we have to offer and check that out. And I have the rest for agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. The first comment that I'd like to make is in regards to Mr. Young, and obviously, we've talked about this for the last few years, which is troubling and concerning in and of itself. The bottom line here is, and Mr. Young, I've had numerous conversations with you, he is being held hostage, basically in his own home. Number one, because there's a big hole in his backyard. Number two, because he can't... He couldn't sell his home even if he tried. And number three, it's my belief that once lawyers get involved, common sense sometimes goes out the window. It was quite some time ago, when Mr. Young came to Council, the city deemed that an emergency, which it is, it is a public safety emergency. Anyone who has not seen his backyard and hasn't seen the proximity to an alley, which is right behind his property, and the children that play in that... is right behind his property, and the children that play in that neighborhood would understand that it is a major, major hazard. So the fact that here we are, you know, years later, still waiting for the city to make a move, and I understand the complexity of the situation because of the Meadow Brook Creek project, but the emergency takes precedent over that. We've had conversations with the administration. We thought we were getting someplace, and as Mr. Young pointed out, you take one step forward and five steps back. It's my belief that, and I agree with Mr. Young, that the five of us, five council members, need to go to the mayor and demand that he settle this once and for all. Get rid of the attorneys, get rid of the lawsuits, and take care of the issue. Because if this was in your backyard, if it was in anybody else's backyard, you would expect the same. So I would ask that the five of my colleagues, call the mayor, set up a meeting, and let's get this issue taken care of once and for all. My last comment is about the caucus that we had this afternoon with the Pennsylvania Economy League. First of all, it's my belief that the caucus should have been more than a half hour. It's not nearly enough time. I had additional questions that I was not able to get to. So that's number one. Number two, I asked for this caucus months ago, and it is completely unacceptable that not one person from the administration bothered to show up and sit at that table and answer questions. I asked not only for the Pennsylvania Economy League to come, but for the mayor and the business administrator, because they're the ones that are crafting the budget. You know, it's not like we're talking about installing a sidewalk at Mount Pleasant. We're talking about the financial stability of the city over the next few years and our exit from Act 47. So the fact that, and I understand Mr. Bolzoni had a prior commitment, and he did show up at the end and sat in the audience, but it's unacceptable that no one from the city bothered to come and answer any questions or chime in on the city's financial health over the next few years. It was also really concerning to me that as we checked through some of the recommendations in the exit plan, that there was either a non-answer from Pell or the fact that they didn't know what the progress was from the city or that there was no progress. There are simple things in that plan, from the debt management policy to the fact that, and this goes back to 2015, to get all of the ordinances and regulations and rules from the pension boards and create a governance policy. And still, we're here in 2018, and there is none. So that's concerning. So, you know, I hope that when we come back in September, before we get into the budget, that we can ask Pell and the mayor and the business administrator to come back before council so that we can have these conversations and so we can understand where we're going to be in the next two or three years as we exit Act 47. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Double pension was brought up again, and unfortunately, crafting legislation takes a lot longer than we would like, but it is something that's continuing to be worked on, and there will be legislation, that much I could guarantee you, to put reforms in place to stop a double pension situation from happening again. This is something I've been working on, geez, probably over two years at this point. Unfortunately, it does take a while. It took us a year just to get the state police report. So it is something that we're still actively working on. Second item, which is one that a lot of other towns have done, and a couple of people brought it up to me, a number of other towns around Scranton have banners on a lot of their main streets for hometown heroes. And I think that's a great program. It's something I think we should look at doing. It's a great way to honor our veterans, and really, it also spruces up those streets. When you drive down some of the streets in surrounding communities that have those hometown hero banners, not only is it an honor to the veterans, their families, measure of pride, and it makes the streets look nice. So if my colleagues would agree, I'd like to send a letter to the administration asking that the city look into some type of hometown heroes program. It might be something we want to partner with, maybe one of the local nonprofits with, maybe the Chamber of Commerce. I do think it's a great idea, and have to thank the residents that brought it up to me because Scranton is not doing this type of program when other towns are, and it really has been popular in other areas. So if everyone agrees, I'd like to send that letter to the mayor. And finally, just following up on the caucus with Pell, I do agree, I actually didn't get a chance to ask any questions as well because we did run out on time. Overall, though, I'm glad the representatives of Pell came in, and really, being on council as long as I have, this is by far the most positive report financially that we've received from Pell. You know, on the financial standpoint, with the city not having raised taxes in two years, we're paying our bills, which again, shouldn't be an accomplishment, but 10 years ago, even lesser than that, it was a big accomplishment just to have money on hand to be able to pay bills. So I'm grateful for the amount of progress that we have made. I'm sure others and the newspaper will probably harp on the areas of concern, but all in all, the city has made tremendous progress over the last number of years, and that's something I'm hoping will continue to move forward and hoping to continue a cooperative relationship not only with Pell but with our other community partners. And that is all. Thank you.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file of the Council number 26, 2018, granting a temporary construction and permanent maintenance easement agreement on property owned by the city of Scranton to Scranton-Lacwanna Industrial Building Company for the installation of sidewalks at the Mount Pleasant Corporate Center along Mount Pleasant Drive as more fully described in Exhibit A.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution number 65, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $800,000, accepting and dispersing the grant and coordinate the use of the grant funds with Scranton Samter LP for the project to be named the Samter Redevelopment Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 66, 2018, appointment of Portia Patel, 678 Adams Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as the alternate number one member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of Scranton. Ms. Patel will fill the alternate number one position that was vacated by Paul Marks when he became a regular member of the board. Ms. Patel will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Marks, which expires on July 1, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 59, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a professional services contract with Abrahamsen Conneboy and Abrahamsen P.C. for special labor council legal services for the city of Scranton.
As the chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. Yeah, I'm not going to beat a horse to death because I think I've made my points over the last few weeks, but I do want to point out one thing. Mr. Abrahamsen and his firm submitted a supplemental submittal on July 16th when I had requested, you know, when I pointed out that they did not fill out the RFQ correctly. So they did submit something on July 16th, and it gave the person who contributed, to whom they contributed to, the date, and then the amount. When I pointed out again that it still was not filled out correctly, they submitted an additional document on July 20th. Now, the problem with this is, I will point out a few issues. Number one, there are political contributions that are on the second submittal that were not on the first. For example, April 4th, 2013, Mr. Abrahamsen donated to Bill Courtrite in the amount of $2,500. That was not included on the first submittal. There are different dates for contributions. For example, July, on the submittal from July 20th, it says that Mr. Abrahamsen donated to Mr. Courtrite on September 21st, 2013, September 25th, 2013. Those dates are different than the ones that he submitted on July 16th. There are several other examples of this. I'm not going to go through every one of them, but the bottom line here is, it's extremely sloppy. And, you know, based on all of this information that I presented over the last few weeks, coupled with the serious concerns that I have about this law firm, I can't in good conscience vote for this contract, and I'm not sure how any of my colleagues can vote for it as well. The firm has made close to $1 million over the last few years from doing business with this city, and the fact that a simple RFQ was not filled out correctly is extremely concerning. I mean, if they're not forthright with this information now, and it was in the RFQ, you know, what if something comes up and we need to request additional information? How are we sure that they're giving us the correct documentation and that what they're giving us is truthful? You know, the fact that the dates are different, contributions to the mayor were left out of the initial supplemental document that was provided, is extremely troubling. The second point, we did meet with the city solicitor. She did provide answers to the questions that I had asked, and I do appreciate that. We do not, we do not see eye to eye on this issue. I do not think that it was fair that the city added language in the RFQ that the firm who understands the unique culture of Scranton's labor unions will be given preference. This was not in the original RFP back in 2014 when we had seven bidders for this contract. This year, we only have two, I think because of the language that was put in there. So, you know, it's my belief that we should be trying to get as many bidders as possible to get the best deal for the city. Finally, you know, the fact that Mr. Abrahamsen attempted to sue me for asking for backup documentation for the work he did in exchange for $400,000 is extremely troubling, not only pointed out by me but my colleagues and members of the public last year. And I'd like people to think of it this way, as a simple analogy. If you went to a mechanic to fix your car and he charged you $5,000, you'd want to see a receipt for what he did for that amount of money. If the mechanic gave you a hard time when you asked for the backup documentation, if he gave you one receipt and then it wasn't right and gave you another receipt, that wasn't right, you had to continue to ask for information, then he attempted to sue you because you were asking why he charged you $5,000, I don't think, I'm guessing, that none of my colleagues up here or no one in the audience, no one in the public, would hire that mechanic again. So logic should tell all of us that we should not hire this law firm again, rebid it for all of the reasons that I've given over the last few weeks. So I do not think that this law firm should get this contract for all of the reasons that I've pointed out, and I would hope that my colleagues would use common sense and vote against this contract. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the question?
On the question, one thing I want to, in all of this, give some credit to is attorney Escrow, the city solicitor, not just for responding to city council's questions, but to my knowledge, this contract and the La Bella contract were the first RFPs that made a requirement by the city, the completion of attachment and full disclosure of campaign contributions to political candidates. So I think that brings a very bright light and additional transparency to the process. So I don't think that can be understated. Otherwise, I think it's time to vote.
Yeah, on the question, I was clear about the completion for the RFQ, and without having it fully filled out, I was not for this contract. In the meantime, we did get everything that we needed to hear. I was against Mr. Abrahamsen's lawsuit against Councilman Gahan. I was vocal about it at the time. He since retract that, and, you know, I believe he's actually contacted Mr. Gahan and said, "Don't worry about it," and that's, that's good for me.
Well, he has not contacted me personally, nor would I entertain a phone call because I don't really think that's appropriate. He did drop the lawsuit, but look, I mean, I think a precedent has been set here, gentlemen, that in the future, should we ever request additional documentation or ask for additional information, that, you know, we are under the guise of a possible threat that we may get sued. So I think that everyone should take that in strong consideration before we hire this firm again. Thank you.
Yeah, on the question, I'm going to, I agree with Councilman Gahan. I think if the requirements are put in an RFQ, when it goes out, it should come back with everything that the RFQ required. We shouldn't have to request additional information, so that's why I believe it should be rebid, and I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
No.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.